Good afternoon. I want to welcome you to this Wednesday, June 6th, meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. You can probably tell from the decorations, we are in a celebratory mood here in City Hall, and you'll know why in a few moments, but for the time being, I'd like to invite those who are willing and able to please stand for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, worthy of all praise, thank you for giving us the model of how we should live. Please help us mirror your example and live each day in the way that is pleasing to you. May our words and actions be an encouragement to one another and build each other up so that we can continue moving forward together in the work you have called us to do. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this amazing community we call home. We ask that you please give us guidance in our decisions presented before us today, and that we have a positive impact on our citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated, please. Mr. City Manager, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there's one additional presentation, and I'll turn it back to you for then.
Absolutely. Commissioners, will you join me down at the podium on the floor, please? Leave the balls alone, Gil. Those aren't for you. All right. I want to invite forward to join us for a special presentation, Coach Lonny Alameda, head coach of the FSU Women's Softball Team, and all of her guests, if they won't mind. Nice. Well, you all probably have figured out why we are here in this moment. I want to officially welcome to City Hall the 2018 Women's College World Series National Champions. Awesome, 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 awesome. This is the first softball national championship in the program's history for the Atlantic Coast Conference, for the ACC. Will y'all give it up again for the Florida State University? This is a tremendous success, obviously, for you all, the team, but I want you to know that the City of Tallahassee and the 200 residents here in the city limits of the City of Tallahassee, and obviously Leon County, we all celebrate you today. We know over 200,000 in the city. I'm sorry, well, if that were the case, we would be the population of the city, right here in this room. I want to express a heartfelt appreciation because we know that you all just landed only a little while ago, and these folks trotted right over here on our request so that we could celebrate them in person today, so we thank you for that. It is my honor to present at this moment a proclamation on behalf of the City of Tallahassee, and I want to let you know in advance, frankly, because y'all won, and we had to move so quickly, we couldn't get our key to the city here in time for you. And so, we're going to have you back, or we'll come to you and present you with the highest honor that we are able to offer to citizens here, and that's the key to the city. But in it said... Now, I just want to warn you in advance, it doesn't open anything. But whatever you want to tell your friends, feel free. Today, a proclamation will simply have to suffice for this moment, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Florida State University Women's Softball Team defeated the University of Washington 8 to 0 to win the 2018 Women's College World Series. And whereas it is the Seminoles' first college World Series title, and whereas it is Florida State University's first national title since 2014, and whereas the Florida State University Women's Softball Team is the first NCAA softball team in the Atlantic Coast Conference to win the World Series title, the ACC rejoices with you today as well. And whereas the Florida State University's six wins in elimination games in this year's NCAA tournament tied the record for the most in a single year. And whereas the Florida State University set new program records for doubles, 115, and home runs, 76, in a single season." That's incredible. Whereas pitcher Megan King allowed one earned run over 34.1 innings of work. And that's not all. And a 0.2 earned run average, the lowest earned run average in a Women's College World Series in NCAA history. And whereas Women's College World Series Most Outstanding Player Jessie Warren leaves FSU in the NCAA All-Time Top 10 Home Runs, 83, and RBIs, 273, and matched the NCAA record with 13 hits in a single WCWS after 3 for 4 performance in Tuesday's clinching win. Congratulations. And whereas the City of Tallahassee congratulates the Florida State University College players and coaches for their success in the 2018 NCAA Women's College World Series Championship, now therefore I, Andrew Gillum, and my colleagues here on the City Commission and the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the Florida State University Women's Softball Team for their great accomplishment in winning the title of 2018 Women's College World Series winners. Congratulations. Coach Alameda, I want to invite you forward to make a couple of remarks, and if there's a member of the team who would like to join in those remarks, again, we celebrate you, and I'll tell you, I've heard this repeated by many people, what folks appreciate so deeply about you, not only your winning, but the fact that there appears to be no attitudes, no... That may be wrong. But there are no pretenses with you. You all seem to work incredibly well as a team, and I tell you, in addition to winning this title, you've got to take great pride that you've done so, while being sisterly to each other, family to each other, and working together with a real communal spirit, so congratulations on that as well. Coach?
Oh, my. It's always comfortable speaking on softball, and this is awesome. I'm just so excited for the City of Tallahassee, the Florida State Athletic Family, Florida State University, Seminoles across the country that reached out and supported us. We felt the love. We felt, for an inning, it was overwhelming when we started yesterday, but the whole morning, yesterday morning, we felt the love on social media and phone calls, and I just so appreciate that, I know we appreciate that. It's a family here, we know it's a family, but we truly lived it yesterday morning and felt it, so this trophy's not only for us, it's for the whole city, and, you know, for all the alumni, and everyone that's played, you know, as a softball player at Florida State. We're just so glad that we had the opportunity to bring it here into Tallahassee, so thank you for that. Jessie, do you want to come say a few words? Jessie's going to be truly missed, as you heard of all the stats, but she's an incredible on-the-field and off-the-field player, but she's grown up so much, so she's ready for this mic moment right now, because we prepared her for it, to speak on behalf of the team, but again, here's Jessie Warren.
This is so cool. First of all, just thank you for all the support from all of you guys here and just Tallahassee, and we've felt the love, like Coach just said, all week, and we really appreciate everything and all the support you've given us. As a senior of this squad, I am beyond proud of all these girls standing next to me. I knew I was going to cry. I couldn't have asked for a better end to my senior career at Florida State, and I'm sure the other seniors on the team could say the same thing. I love you guys, and you guys would truly be missed.
Did you come back down?
Yep, yep, yep. I don't know, I guess... You see her coming, that's for sure. That's the...
That's the Sterling Award.
Okay, great. All right. Well, the celebrations continue. I'd like to now invite forward another set of champions for a different award. I want to invite forward the City of Tallahassee's Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department, all the folks who have anything to do with it. Awesome. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Let's spread out in front. Welcome, welcome. Awesome.
Did you go this year? Did one of any of us go? You did. Did you want to make this? Did you want to read the pro? Why don't you do that?
Hi, everybody, tonight, and I am very grateful to the mayor for allowing me to read this, the Sterling Award proclamation. This is, "These are the people that make your lives work. These are the people that make sure that your water runs and that your other parts of your water run away, and that your roads are able to serve your businesses and get you back and forth to school and work, and the places that we all have to go every day. These are the people," and it's several hundred others, "they are the people who make our lives possible, so I want, I know that, speaking for my colleagues, I know we all are incredibly grateful to you, just as residents, for that. So, I appreciate the opportunity to read the UUPI Florida Sterling Council's Governor Sterling Award. Whereas the City of Tallahassee Underground Utilities Public Infrastructure Department provides the highest quality services to our community, including water, natural gas, wastewater, stormwater, roadways, and sidewalks. And whereas in 2015, the City's Underground Utilities Department was the first public utility in the state of Florida to receive the Florida Sterling Council's Governor's Sterling Award," that is a mouthful, "an esteemed award for organizational excellence. And whereas the City's Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure continues to successfully streamline processes, eliminate redundancies, and increase value to our communities with a laser focus on supporting the City Commission's strategic priorities that are in keeping with the priorities of the community. And whereas Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure's workforce is made up of more than 540 men and women delivering best-in-class service, are data-driven visionaries who work smart by leveraging innovation and technology to provide a holistic approach to maintaining the city's valuable assets. And whereas the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Team continued their journey to further strengthen and improve and innovate winning systems to ensure long-term success and sustainability by setting their sights on continued excellence using the Sterling Management Framework, coupled with an ISO 14001 Environmental Management System to empower employees to embrace innovation to drive performance improvement. And whereas, for 26 years, the Governor's Sterling Award has judged Florida's organizations and businesses regarding the successful achievement of performance excellence within our management, within their management and operations, and has acknowledged over 70 organizations and businesses as Governor's Sterling Award recipients. And whereas the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department's performance and processes were scored against seven categories of Sterling criteria, including leadership, strategic planning, customer focus, measurement, analysis, and knowledge management. Workforce plus, I can't read, workforce focus, process management, and results, and were found to meet and in most cases exceed the required standards. Whereas the City's Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department is the recipient of the Florida Sterling Council's 2018 Governor's Sterling Sustained Excellence Award, and is the first utility among all public and private utilities in Florida to receive this award, thus retaining the role model status originally conferred by the Florida Sterling Council's Governor's Sterling Award in 2015. Now therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, by the authority, the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, and also, this goes for the entire commission, do hereby commend Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure for being the first utility in the state of Florida to receive this esteemed award for organizational excellence, and recognize Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure staff for their dedication and commitment to excellence. I think we'd probably like to ask Mr. Tadros to come up and speak a few words to us. He is the Director of Public Infrastructure and Underground Utilities.
I will introduce Jean Piano, the Executive Director, and Dan Geiger from the Sterling Council office, they are here, and I will do my remarks after that. Just a great city, or what? Think about it. As I was, as I was running here from my car, where I had to park it about two miles away, I said, "Lord, thank you, this is not lava or hot ash. I can live with this." It's a great honor to be here today. I am so proud of the Women's Softball Team, I think that's just great. I'm not a baseball fan, but I love watching college baseball and college softball every year, and it usually comes while we usually have an annual conference, so I don't have a lot of time to watch it, but I was very pleased and very proud of what they've been able to accomplish. For Underground Utilities, about three years ago, 2015, they won the Governor's Sterling Award. As was in the citation, they mentioned that it was the only utility organization in the state of Florida to win that level of recognition. It's also the only one in the country to reach that level of recognition. And I'll keep this short. When I, I remember three years ago, and I said to Mike afterwards, "You know, it's really great that you're a role model and what you've been able to accomplish, but don't forget all of those opportunities for improvement, we call them OFIs, and you need to do something about it." And that's what the site visit, and that's what this whole process this last year was. We went back and took a look at what they did to address the issues that were opportunities that could make them even better. And on top of that, you almost doubled the size of the organization and the requirements of what they had to do, so they did extremely well. The biggest problem they had this year with opportunities is comparative data, and there's nobody that has comparative data, there's nobody they can go to. And if they were out there, I doubt that there's anybody that could have higher customer satisfaction or higher workforce satisfaction than they've been able to achieve. My congratulations to all of you.
Awesome.
One more thing, here we have a short video that we ran Friday night as we walked the stage, and just speak about Underground Utilities, about a few minutes.
Our city, our home. Welcome to the City of Tallahassee. We are people serving people, and we love what we do. We take pride in the work we do and the services we provide to the 190,000 residents who are also our neighbors.
In 2015, Underground Utilities received the Governor's Sterling Award in recognition of the department's commitment to improved operations, cost savings, customer service, employee engagement, and applied results. Shortly thereafter, in 2016, Public Works merged with Underground Utilities to create a new department by streamlining services and increasing value with an annual combined operating and capital expenses budget of over half a billion dollars. Today, Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure is an award-winning team of more than 540 men and women who provide exceptional customer service on a daily basis as technicians, engineers, mechanics, scientists, operators, and administrators.
I'm humbled, honored, and at the same time excited to receive this coveted award. As I do so, I would like to offer my sincerest gratitude to the Florida Sterling Council. I'm even more grateful for the opportunity to work every day with such a talented team called Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure. They have a deep-seated passion for providing the highest level of service to our community, and I'm very thankful for that.
Our work plays a vital role in the everyday lives of Tallahassee residents. We are dedicated to improving the quality of life in our community while preserving and protecting the environment. We are an efficient and innovative team, providing our customers with best-in-class service, including water, natural gas, wastewater, street preservation and signage, sidewalks, stormwater, and drainage elements of all city properties and street layouts.
I'd like to congratulate the City of Tallahassee Utilities for the amazing work that they do for this community every day of the year. We are the first and only public or private utility to receive the Sterling Award, as well as the Sterling Sustained Excellence Award. I specifically want to thank them for the great work that they've done these past several years in the aftermath of natural disasters, not only here at home, but away from our community. We could not be prouder of you than we are right now. We wish you continued success, and thank you for the great work that you do on behalf of the citizens of Tallahassee.
Congratulations to your own utilities. They go above and beyond for their customers, and it shows.
We appreciate this most coveted award. It demonstrates the technology and innovation we use here at the City of Tallahassee.
This is a great achievement, and it is a great validation for an organization that always strives to reach excellence in environmental sustainability.
We're elated to receive this recognition, which puts us on the roadmap as a role model in the utility industry.
Our culture is built on knowledge, technical innovation, teamwork, and putting the customer first.
With a laser focus on supporting the City Commission's strategic priorities.
We have implemented a number of technology solutions that have really changed the landscape of our organization, allowing us to serve our customers more efficiently and effectively.
Our dedication goes way beyond the professional services we provide. Big Ben Habitat for Humanity, Relay for Life, and other local charities bring our employees and their families together to give back to our community.
Through this process, the Sterling process, we've enhanced our performance, we've realized cost savings, we're doing a better job today than we've ever done. And all of that is a testament to the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department. They really have embraced the process, and not only have they achieved the designation of the Sterling Award, now they're a sustained award winner, and we couldn't be more proud of them and the example they make for all of the city workers, and really, organizations around the state, our peers, as we compare with them, and we learn from others, we're proud to be leaders in this regard.
Our customer promise to strive the way we achieve exceptional customer service.
I genuinely care about my customers.
And community.
I promise to provide superior services.
To support our core values.
I will impress.
My customers.
By giving smarter, better, and faster services.
I would just like to add that it starts with leadership, and the city has been blessed to have a leader such as Mike Tadros, who will be retiring, I know, shortly, and will be very much missed by the city, and his leadership team, because it does start with that leadership culture. You can't get far without leaders really driving that improvement, driving that excellence into the core of the organization, and driving that commitment to service. So, I want to acknowledge the leadership, and I want to encourage and challenge other city departments to come on and join the City Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department and become a role model as well. But thank you again, and again, I just want to really thank the leaders of the city for your support and your commitment to excellence. Thank you.
And it already has been stated, but Mike Tadros, our fearless leader in this area, is going to be retiring this summer, and I can't imagine a better way to go out, man, from a job than at the top, having celebrated immeasurable records where you don't have a competitor in the field, and you leave this community, and particularly this department, better than you found it. So, please help me welcome Mike Tadros, Director of the Department.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, Executive Team, it's indeed a great honor to receive this proclamation and award on behalf of all the dedicated men and women in Underground Utility Public Infrastructure. It has always been said that the journey to reach the top is hard, but to remain as a top-performing organization is much harder. At this point, I want to thank, and I want to applaud Jean Piano and Dan Geiger, the Executive Directors of the Sterling Council, for working diligently to maintain the integrity of the process. Just to shed some light on the process, we have been examined, there is about 170 categories and subcategories on the examination, and I can assure you, the examiners went thoroughly through each one of them before Public Utilities, Underground Utilities, and Public Infrastructure was awarded this coveted award. But we couldn't get to this point without the support of this body, without the directions from the City Commission, City Managers, and the Executive Team. You push the envelope with us. You ask us to be better every day. You ask us to focus on this community and go on above and beyond, and that's what we did. Today, it's very nice, and it's a wonderful thing to be recognized and receive this award and recognition. It's not about the award. It's about the culture that the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure embrace, a culture that embraces innovation, empowerment, and team that is focused in being the best they can be every day. I'm exceedingly grateful for all the effort and remarkable work our employees have put into elevating UUPI from just a regular utility to a statewide role model utility. And I might add, we are a strong contender for becoming a nation's top utility. These are not accomplishments a general manager makes alone. These are achievements that require a committed team of gifted, tenacious individuals coming together and working relentlessly to be the best they can be every day. I'm proud of what we have accomplished as a team as we pursued the city commission's priorities and brought value to this community. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, and the Executive Team, today and after 30 years, I strongly believe that my job is complete. There is no better time than now to step down. But in preparation for this, as we learned from Sterling, I've been working very closely with the key members of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure on succession planning. Just last Friday, as my team and I walked across the stage to receive this coveted award, I realized that my high expectation of them had become reality. They are highly qualified, fully capable, and ready and anxious to lead and carry the legacy of UUPI to levels of success far beyond what we have already been achieved. I'm thoroughly convinced that UUPI under the new leadership will continue to be an increasingly strong force in the utility and public infrastructure industry, and will continue to bring innovative ideas and create pioneering solutions for our customers. In closing, I extend my deepest appreciation to all the city mayors, commissioners, city managers, executives, leadership teams, and all of the other extraordinary people in this great organization, with whom I have the privilege to work with them in a daily basis. Special thanks go to all my UUPI extended family. The memories of serving this community shoulder to shoulder with all of you will always be held close to my heart. Thank you very much.
All right, in our final presentation of this section, I want to invite forward a few individuals, Ms. Nicole Everett, Grace Hall, Enid Lunin, Elizabeth Reese, Trevor Houghton, and anyone else who may be here for this presentation for the Caribbean American Heritage Council. Will you all join me here at the podium? Those names that I called and those who I didn't, if you're here for that purpose, please join us. Hi. Come on up, folks. Let's see you. All right. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation in honor of National Caribbean American Heritage Month. And the proclamation, thank you all for joining us. The proclamation reads, "Whereas this year marks the 12th anniversary since President George W. Bush proclaimed June as National Caribbean American Heritage Month, and whereas during this time, we celebrate the contributions of Caribbean Americans to the fabric of our nation and honor the bonds of friendship between the United States and the Caribbean nations. And whereas we pay homage to the many Caribbean Americans who have shaped our nation's history, including the Alexander Hamilton, a founding father of the United States and First Secretary of the Treasury, Ms. Jennifer Carroll, former Lieutenant Governor of the state of Florida, and the first African-American and first woman elected to this position. And whereas the City of Tallahassee has long recognized the value of our relationships with our Caribbean neighbors, as demonstrated in initiatives such as the Tallahassee-St. Martin Sister City Program. And whereas the Caribbean Americans have contributed to Tallahassee's economic development, rich diversity, and cultural landscape through their careers and professional outreach. And whereas the City of Tallahassee and the Caribbean American Heritage Council recognizes the contributions of Caribbean Americans and honor local leaders such as Nicole Everett of the Caribbean American, I'm sorry, lost you, Nicole. Nicole Everett, Grace Hall, Enid Lunin, Elizabeth Reese, and Trevor Houghton. Is Trevor here? All right, in his honor, for their service and their accomplishments. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Gillum, with the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as National Caribbean American Heritage Month in the City of Tallahassee, and ask our citizens to join in the celebration and participate in activities related to National Caribbean American Heritage Month. And I'm hoping you all will tell us a little bit about what we can expect this month. So many of us look forward to our own local celebrations, and as the proclamation indicated, Caribbean Americans contribute richly to our nation, to our state, and particularly to the City of Tallahassee, in helping to evolve our rich cultural experience on everything from education to economic development and commerce, to the legal fields, to entrepreneurship and innovation, and so many ways your contributions are made and felt in this community. And so will you please join me in recognizing National Caribbean Heritage Month?
I'll go first. So I'm Cuban on my mom's side, and I'm Jamaican by marriage. So this is very special to me. Thank you. But I'd like to share this recognition not just with you all here today, but to my daughter, Belen, who worked very hard, not just collecting, but delivering personal care items and school supplies for high school girls in Jamaica, so much so that they asked her not to send anymore. And to her Girl Scout troop that stepped up to the plate, to our friends in our sister city, St. Martin, after the hurricane, and they supplied water, clothing, and nonperishable food. So I'm very proud of her and her troop. Thank you.
Greetings. I'm Nicole Everett, and I am Bahamian on my mother's paternal side. Originally from Miami, and have experienced a lot of Caribbean flavor being raised down in South Florida. In my neighborhood, we had a family that was from Puerto Rico, from the Bahamas, from Jamaica, from Cayman. So we had a rich flavor of activities going on. I could go to one house and eat roast compollo, to another house to eat curry goat and peas and rice, another house I could have conch fritters and conch salad, and, you know, just a rich variety of things. So I'm very honored to be recognized in this way today.
I'm also very happy to be here and to be recognized. Thank you very much, those who put my name forward. I've been in this city and this country, basically, for 33 years. Left from Jamaica, came here and worked with the Florida Department of Agriculture for 21 years. It really is a privilege to share our culture with the Americans and be an American myself at this point. Children were grown up here and went to school here, so they are Americans, even though they were born in Jamaica. We all are Americans now, American citizens. So thank you very much for this opportunity that you have given to us, for the contribution that we have made in our workplaces, in our churches, in the neighborhood, in the community. I still help with the Care and the Center, the Homeless Shelter, and help with the Child Evangelism Fellowship, where we have, in the after-school program, the Good News Clubs. Mine was at Gilchrist Elementary School. But thanks for the recognition.
My name is Enid Lunin, and I came to Tallahassee, ooh, many, many years ago, maybe too many to mention, but by profession, I'm a registered nurse. And apart from the flavorful food, spicy food, I have been involved in community health care, because health care is such a major item everywhere for the world. So I've done that through the churches and through the Nurses Organization here in Tallahassee. And I'm very grateful today to be honored. And I've lived in New York, in Washington, DC, and Tallahassee has been home for many years. I love Tallahassee. I love the people. I love the functions, the Caribbean Association, and others. So again, I'm very grateful to be here today. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, thank you all for joining in those awesome celebrations. We're now moving on. I believe that we are now at the point of the agenda for speakers on un-agenda items. Are there any speakers?
On agenda items.
On agenda. I always say un-agenda. Agenda items.
We do have one speaker for this portion of the meeting, Bill Wilson, speaking on Item 1301, which is the RFQ related to the Community Land Trust. He will give his name and address for the record. You may begin, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Bill Wilson, 1860 Old Ford Drive, with Graceful Solutions. Just want to thank you all for moving this land trust thing forward. It's, I think, a much-needed tool in the community, and we've been working with staff on a couple of minor modifications to the qualifications in the RFQ, and I think this is going to be a good move and will give us another tool to really build some affordable housing in this town. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
No other speakers on the agenda items, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Excuse me. We're now on to consent items. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move consent. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. Commissioners, we're now on to Item 11.01.
Move approval of the appointment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. We're now on to introduction of items. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.01 is the introduction of Ordinance Number 18-0-18, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-3.302, 14-3.304, 14-3.305, 14-3.306, 14-3.307, 14-3.310, 14-3.316, 14-3.317, 14-3.319, 14-3.325, and 14-3.331 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to police employees' pension provisions and contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the first and only public hearing is scheduled for June 20, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Great. Please show those items introduced without objection. Commissioners, we're now on to policy formation.
One more.
Is that one?
We have four.
Were all those ones?
That's just the one.
Oh, Jesus, I swear you ripped off all those.
So Item number 12.02 is introduction of Ordinance Number 18-0-19. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for June 20, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. It is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 15-36 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee to revise the membership composition of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee and to clarify reporting timeframes to the City Commission, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Without objection, please.
The next item is Item number 12.03. This is the introduction of Ordinance Number 18-0-20. This is the first and only public hearing. It's scheduled for the joint meeting of the City Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners on June 21, 2018, at 3:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. This is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting text amendments to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Without objection.
Item number 12.04 is the introduction of Ordinance Number 18-Z-16. It will be the first and only public hearing scheduled for June 20, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. And it is an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in the planned unit development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, and providing for an effective date.
Without objection.
Mayor.
Commissioner Miller.
I have a question.
I have a question. On 12.03, June 21, at 3:00 p.m., I have a blueprint intergovernmental agency meeting on my calendar.
This is a scheduled meeting of the joint city and county? Is that what, or is this just the city?
Yes, and it is set for 3:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is an attempt to take advantage of the combination of the moody's at the same time, and therefore it's advertised at the same time.
Probably we should list that it's a public hearing for this purpose. I mean, it's listed as a blueprint agency, intergovernmental agency meeting, and I understand the idea of using everybody's time wisely, but maybe we should move the intergovernmental agency meeting to 3:30, for example, and put this particular public hearing on the calendar. Because right now, the public has no way to be aware that there is going to be a public hearing on this topic.
Well, this ordinance will be noticed in the newspaper, but yes, we could clarify on the city's notification processes that it will be separate meetings.
Right, I think we should do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Showing those ordinances introduced, we're now on to policy formation. Item 13.01, City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, earlier this year, you directed staff to determine the feasibility of establishing a community land trust. As part of that effort, staff recommends that you issue, you approve the issuance of an RFQ, or Request for Qualifications. This will help us explore the feasibility and the capacity of our community partners to stand up a community land trust, to address local affordable housing organizations, and help us with this exploration effort. So we're seeking your approval for that tonight. Michael Parker, who's the lead on this effort, is here with us. He has a brief presentation, and he's here to answer questions as well.
Michael.
Thank you. Just as a way of background, you recall that back in October of last year at a joint city-county commission meeting, you accepted the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Work Group on a number of steps to improve affordable housing efforts within our community. And one of those was to explore the feasibility of establishing a community land trust. We also briefed you in March, the workshop on this, but just for recollection, a community land trust is basically an entity where they control the ownership of the property in perpetuity and then make that property available for affordable housing, so that improvements can be put on it, but they retain the ownership. And it's a way to maintain affordable housing within your inventory of affordable housing stock. And also, it is also used as a tool to help deal with potential gentrification of areas that are in redevelopment, so that the property can be preserved and available to area residents as areas may improve and therefore land values go up and may preclude existing residents from remaining there. So with that in mind, what we have, the commission asked us to do was to explore the feasibility. On April 13, we had a workshop with city and county staff, conducted by the Florida Housing Coalition, which also runs the Florida Institute for Community Land Trusts. They went through a process of explaining how the land trust process works, what are the potential benefits, what are the particular challenges that you need to look for if you're going to pursue this. So the next step in the process we're recommending is that we would go out and issue a Request for Qualifications, which would be used to identify if there are organizations within our community that have the interest and then the capacity to function as a community land trust. With the idea that assuming that we can identify organizations that have that capacity, then we would evaluate them and then bring back to you a recommendation about how we would move forward with an organization if we wanted to pursue a community land trust in Tallahassee. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Awesome. Any questions, Commissioners? I'll just say, very, very glad to see this item, looking forward to seeing this tool in place to expand affordable housing.
I'll move Option 1.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second on Option 1. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now on to Item 13.02, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2016, the city commission authorized a loan agreement with the Bethel Community Development Corporation to provide funding to acquire property and construct affordable housing. Staff recommends an amendment to the existing loan agreement, which will allow the CDC to construct an additional home. Michael Parker is here to answer any questions on this item.
Move Option 1.
Second.
Great, there's a motion and a second on Option 1. No questions. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we're now at the un-agenda speaker portion of the meeting. Are there any speakers on un-agenda items?
Mayor, I have one speaker for this portion of the meeting. That is Erwin Jackson.
Kidding me? Surprise. We have a little truth coming from the Tallahassee Democrat. Pardon? Excuse me. Gillum, if you can keep him under control. This is my three minutes. When the editorial page makes a cartoon about corruption of Mayor Gillum, then we have a problem. The cartoon shows the corruption in City Hall. We have the cash that he says he was taking. You have a picture of Adam Corey and the mayor. They went to a cash-only island, but the problem is the FBI was already there. A few weeks ago, Andrew Gillum's staff director, Jamie Van Pelt, delivered a body block to prevent Tallahassee reports, Steve Stewart, from asking a very simple question about Costa Rica and his vacation. Why was Gillum trying to hide from the press and the public that his aide would resort to a physical attack? Now we know. On May 31, Tallahassee reported that Gillum was vacationing in a waterfront mansion in Costa Rica with two city lobbyists and vendors, Adam Corey and Sean Pittman. Is there a problem here? The Tallahassee Democrat confirmed this report. Even more suspicious, Gillum's staff admitted to the Democrat that he paid cash for all expenses but could not produce any paid receipts. Gillum, you're just a terrible liar. You have no receipts because your two favorite lobbyists paid your way, as shown in the caricature up here. What is a small trip compared to a donation to Adam Corey of 2.1 million of city money so he could open up a bar? On June 1, 2018, Agent Jamie tried to cover for you and stated that, quote, "No city business was conducted on this trip." This, too, was untrue. Text messages confirm that during this trip, Corey was contacting now-famous FBI Mike Miller to arrange a meeting with Gillum to get his support to expand CRA boundaries for his personal financial gain. This trip parallels the trip enjoyed by Gillum, Corey, FBI Mike Miller, and Gillum's brother Marcus to New York City. Again, Gillum could not explain who was paying for the boat ride, the baseball games, or the Broadway ticket shows. Don't feel sorry for these lobbyists now. They were well-paid by Gillum. On 12 issues brought before this commission by Adam Corey, all 12 received a favorable vote for the mayor, Gillum. I have filed a complaint with the Fort Eathy Commission regarding Gillum's New York trip and free benefits, and have asked them to investigate similar practices, which I believe have occurred in Costa Rica. The self-serving corruption in Tallahassee has to be exposed and has to be destroyed. Not only do I believe this, but obviously the editorial board of the Tallahassee Democrat believes this.
Your time has expired, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you not interrupting me this time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No further speakers, Mayor.
No further speakers. Commissioners, we're now in sharing of ideas. Are there any ideas to be shared? Any ideas?
Sure, I do.
Please, Commissioner.
And this is a leap from the beginning of this meeting to now, and that is, I'm a proud and have been a Florida Gator, but I couldn't be prouder of the Florida State Seminoles, this softball team. Every time you saw them play, every time any one of them were interviewed and their coached, they were selfless, they were team, they just, the most amazing representatives we could have from our community to be representing us, not only as national championships, but just as young ladies and individuals. So for me, congratulations, Go Knolls.
Here, here.
That's hard to say. Let me tell you something.
Hope we have it on tape. Commissioner Maddox.
I did notice that he couldn't do the tomahawk chop with all of us.
Shoulder.
Yeah, tendonitis. Wanted to share a couple of things. One, the Sterling Award. What a great job by that department. They've worked so hard. And I wanted to again thank Mike Tadros, who has been a long-serving, fantastic public employee. And I wanted to thank him for his service. And also Reese Goode, who had an integral part of that department prior to being named City Manager. And I know you have worked very hard to get them to where they are today, and you should be proud of it. And we would be remiss without mentioning that former City Manager Rick Fernandez worked extremely hard in the underground utilities arena with the structuring of those departments and with their culture that has led to this award, and I didn't want it to go unrecognized for his service.
Here, here. Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted to add my thanks to all of the 540 employees in Underground Utilities. You know, no matter where I go in the city, and this is, this also includes electric with this, people always comment on how polite and helpful our staff are that they encounter. The people that come to their houses to check on leaks or to find out if, you know, attended various issues that people might have, they always comment on how helpful the people are and how courteous the people are. And it was the entire department, this is a major deal, this Sterling Award. It's a process that it takes a year or more to go through it and get totally involving everybody in the organization. And with an organization of this size, you can imagine that's quite a task. But all of those people were responsible for this, and I truly do appreciate them and give them great thanks for all the good work they do for all of the residents, including us.
Here, here. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I too want to just give my two cents worth here, because I'm very proud, too, of the work that our employees do, not specifically in Underground Utilities and public infrastructure, but throughout the city of Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, all but 2,500 or so employees are just phenomenal individuals. I want to congratulate the interim City Manager, Mr. Goode, on the work that he is doing to make sure that we have an ethically sound organization. Reese, I think you got the response to your email that I sent commending you for the work that you are doing to make sure that ethics permeates this organization and that each individual understands their role and responsibility and transparency and the ethical operation of our city. Our citizens expect no less, and so I wanted to congratulate you on that as well. And just to say that that's what the city of Tallahassee is all about. You know, our employees come to work every day, they work hard, they're public servants, they provide excellent service to the citizens of this community, and it shows in the kinds of recognition that we get, especially through this Sterling Award. And so I would hope that, you know, our local media would sometimes report on that kind of thing, because it's important to them that they get that kind of recognition, but everyone throughout our community understands the quality of public servants that they have with the city of Tallahassee. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. And just to add to the accolades, great, great work really all throughout this government on a whole range of issues. And a quick shout-out to Ron, who got married today.
Yeah.
Many of us participated in his ceremony. One of our Parks and Recs employees, who we're just wishing him the very, very best in the many, many years ahead. Mr. Manager, upon official, is anything else we need? Commissioners, if there's nothing further, we stand adjourned. Thank you.